Will, I'll go ahead and call the order of the Thursday, March 12th, 2020, meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sirxina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Poy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you.
Ted, joining us this evening, after being on an airplane today, so safe travels to you, Ted. Lots of hand sanitizer.
Thank you.
Glad to have you with us, glad to have all of you with us, if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. I think we have a request to change the order up just a little bit. Michael?
With, I'd like to amend the agenda for number 10 to go in between two and three, so just move the agenda down one.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you for that extra vote, to help for the record.
Have it's time hard.
Thank you, Michael. We'll adjust the agenda accordingly here. Okay, now we have moved on to the presentation portion of the agenda. We have with us, this is our 2020 state legislative update, we have State Senator and Senate President Charles Schneider with us, and State Representative Cannon Judge, pleasure to have you both here, thank you for taking your time to do this. I think that one thing we try to do around here every year, as you both know, is at least a couple of times a year, stay in touch with what's happening in the legislature, and you guys do a great job meeting with myself and our staff, just to make sure our questions are answered, and we're working on the things that we're working on. So, I'd like to have you, you can either both come up at the same time, or each of you can go, however you'd like to do it, so. Have a team approach here.
Yes.
Good.
Sure, I'd love to go first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to start out by saying, first of all, congratulations to Charles, or Senator Schneider. We, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with him, I'm a new legislator, and he really helped me along, so, you know, civility and compromise has always been something that we've both hung our hat on. I think I can speak for Charles on that, and you cannot believe how much more you can get done, so, I'm gonna miss him down there, and his leadership, and at the young age of, that he is now, further in his career, you know, I wish him all the best, and, you know, I don't think we can sidestep the fact that he is the Senate President, and I mean, he can, at a very young age, so, his service to Iowa is much appreciated by me personally, and I wish him the best, so, I just wanted to start out with that, and tell Charles good job, so I'd like to give him a round of applause.
Please, yeah.
Just so you know, I'm clapping over here.
Good, good. Good, well, I think that-
I just want to say too, Cannon, has been great to work with at the Capitol, and I think you really do have a, you know, a representation at the Capitol, that although being in different parties, does work well together, and that would include Representative Converse, too. And thank you all for your service, too, and it's been a pleasure working with you all the last few years. So, with that, should we just, you want to talk about some of the highlights?
Whatever, yeah, whatever you have, and then I was gonna-
Have to open it up to questions?
Questions, too, and then, the other thing I was gonna say, too, if I could give them an example of how working together is, you know, Charles and I met with a constituent about some hemp, okay, and can, medical hemp, not medical, excuse me.
Hemp CBD?
Hemp CBD, yeah. And, you know, we sat there across the table, and was able to get a bill done with Charles' help, and it's moving through both chambers now, so I just don't think we can undervalue that in our politics today. And that's what it's really all about, when you can have open and frank conversations, and sometimes not agree, and that's okay. So, you know, I wanted to give an example of that, that just passed the House the other day, I know the House Foreign Manager's over top of Charles, see if we can get it through the Senate, that's the way things are supposed to work, and they don't always do, they do a lot more than we think, but that's a classic example, and I wanted to share it with you.
So, from a macro level, I think two of the biggest issues this year, of course, are the Governor's Invest in Iowa Act proposal, and workforce issues, I mean, those are two of the big ones. The Invest in Iowa Act proposal includes a lot of components, a lot of moving parts to it, so it's going to take some time to work through and digest. These first several weeks, we've been working mostly on policy bills, we had our first funnel deadline a few weeks ago, that's the time by which a bill has to be through a policy committee in one chamber, in order to still be alive for consideration during the session. The end of our second funnel deadline is next Friday, and that is another similar deadline, a bill has to be through policy committees in both chambers, in order to still be alive for consideration. And after that deadline, that's normally when people really start getting busy with the work of the budget. We have been looking through the Governor's proposal, there are a lot of things in there that we like, there are a lot of issues in there that match up with the priorities that Clive laid out, in terms of water quality funding, and outdoor recreation funding, and those types of things. So, I'm hopeful and optimistic that we will be able to get something done, the Governor expressed willingness to work with us, to find a way forward, and to find a solution that everyone can be happy with, so, we'll continue to work forward with that. Workforce, of course, is another issue, we need more people in Iowa, and we're doing what we can, on both sides of the aisle, to try and make Iowa a more attractive place for people to want to live, and work, and raise a family, and for businesses to grow and invest. And it, workforce issue is multifaceted, there's no one thing we can do to draw more people here, but there are many things collectively, that hopefully will help us be a more attractive state, and more of a destination location for people. So, childcare is an issue that will help with the labor force, if we have more childcare providers, especially in rural Iowa, that will help with the labor force availability in those areas. Getting rid of the childcare cliff is something that I'm passionate about, and something that is moving forward in the legislature this year. The cliff is, what that means is that if you earn more than 145% of the federal poverty level, all of your childcare assistance benefits are cut off, so the impact of that is, it discourages people from taking promotions, it discourages people from wanting to take a better paying job, and that, of course, impacts our workforce and availability. So, hopefully, we can find a way to phase benefits out, rather than cut them off completely at an arbitrary number. Aside from that, I'm happy to take any questions. Cannon, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, the things that, you know, Charles, you know, obviously, we're working on the same things, but the one thing I would add to that is, if you give, this is the lens I look at things through, if you have good public education, if you have healthcare, and a good paying job, you can be successful, a livable wage job. So I think we need to look at things through those lenses, and sometimes we make it too complicated, so, and we talk a little bit about childcare, that's a workforce issue, I mean, that is one that, think about how many people that could help us get working, that maybe aren't working today, that would like to work, because of the health, or the cost of childcare, especially in that cliff area, where sometimes they're staying home, or not accepting raises because they can't, you know, and healthcare is huge, what can we do to lower costs? We're working on together prescription drugs, drug pricing, we just passed in the House a bill that would put a $100 cap on insulin, I mean, I hear that all the time, that that is, if people rationing their insulin, that's important, and then, you know, if you look at a good public education, so sometimes I don't think we have to overcomplicate it, there's a lot of policy bills down there that we look at, but I think as we look at those types of bills, look at through those three lenses, is what, to me, is what I think is important. So, one area that, I won't touch on areas Charles touched about, but I will add mental health funding into that as well, that's gonna need to be part of the conversation with the budget coming up, I think it's one of the very most important parts, and I think we have to, you know, step up and start funding mental health services in this state, and I think that's something I'm gonna be looking at, I don't know that, you know, I have the silver bullet, how it's gonna come down yet, but there's some talk by the Governor with this Invest in Iowa Act, so, I think that's something that's gonna be major, that we have to yet do so, but I won't go ahead and, you know, repeat what Senator Schneider said. So, one other area I'd just like to touch on, because I'm passionate about it, is our mobile home community in Waukegan, I know that's not a Clive issue, but we're still working on legislation, and for those of you that may not know, we've had an influx of outside venture capitalists, that have come in and started buying mobile homes, not just in parks, not just in Waukegan, but 38 around Iowa, and it's really, has been devastating to a lot of people. The rents have skyrocketed, rules and regulations are, you know, there's been a lot of added costs in utilities, a lot of added costs in fines, and people are being driven out of their homes, so that's something that's happening within a five-minute drive from here. And so, we are working every day, I'm talking to somebody about that issue, because it affects both of our areas, and I think we're gonna be able to get legislation passed this year. We had a bill that did not make it through funnel, had a lot of cosigners, a lot of interest in it, but it did not make it through. So now, the good thing about how we work, and if, I know I sound like a broken record talking about bipartisan work, but now, now's the time, when to go to work and say, what can we get through? And Senator Schneider has a bill that's still alive, that we can add on to and amend.
Sitting in the House.
It's sitting in the House, the one that you passed last year in the Senate, so, we can amend that, we can see, and I'm not in the favor of just amend it, set it back over there, I'll want to go to somebody and say, okay, what can we get done? So, right now, we have, one of my colleagues and myself are working with, trying to see what we can get done, so I think that's an important update, doesn't affect Clive, but it does affect people in this community, and I think we all should be concerned about it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Cannon. Thank you both. Charles, I want to thank you for your service as well, Cannon, I appreciate your overture there, and I think I can speak for all of us here, you've served us well.
Yeah.
And your leadership has been valued and appreciated, and certainly will be missed.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I'm gonna start with a question, Senator Manager Matt and I were at a mayor's meeting last evening, and stormwater management through Capitol Crossroads was the topic of the evening, and something that we've been working on for a couple of years, and, you know, that spills over into water quality, it spills into a lot of things, so, you know, could you elaborate for the council on the steps that are being taken, you know, with water quality, and that whole arena now in the legislature, and perhaps going forward?
So, right now, water quality is funded through a few different buckets, there's a program called REAP, into which money is deposited, there's money that's given toward water quality projects through, through what's called RIF, the, I don't remember what the R actually is for, but I think it's Renew Iowa Infrastructure Fund, it's a fund into which gambling and gaming revenues are deposited every year, and we put money toward, usually vertical infrastructure projects, but also water quality in this case. The Governor's Invest in Iowa Act would fund the Natural Resource Outdoor Recreation Trust Fund that was created via constitutional amendment about 10 years ago, and money through that fund would be used to fund things like water quality, and recreation, and some of those other resource-related projects. I don't know specifically if there's anything in there regarding stormwater, Mayor, I can get back to you on that, but that's how it's funded right now, and how the Governor is proposing to, I guess, reallocate that funding. Reallocate is probably not the right word, change the funding.
Sure. Thanks, Senator. So, let's start with questions, I'll start down here, Eric, go ahead.
Again, thanks both of you for coming and working with us, really appreciate the updates, I think they're a great collaborative. My question is on, on the fire and police municipal retirement system, the 411 system right there, we've talked about this for, the need for reform on this, obviously, it's a real challenge for cities, St. Clive and many others right there, what's your thoughts in getting some reform to that system?
Well, they have to want to come to the table, basically, and they have asked us to take a look this year at the workers' compensation program that's tied into 411, there are, and I'm not an expert on the issue yet, but from what I understand, there are some injuries that can be caused while they're working, that don't manifest themselves until after they retire. And for whatever reason, the 411 system doesn't cover those, whereas a normal workers' comp plan would, that a private entity may have, or that Ipers has, or Ipers doesn't include workers' comp, excuse me, but a private sector workers' comp program. So, I think that's an issue that we all need to better understand, the fiscal note on that bill indicates that the cost to cities is indeterminable, so, you know, that's a little, I'd rather have more concrete answers about what they are proposing us to do, would mean, as far as city funding goes, toward your, the city's obligation, the taxpayers' obligation toward 411. So, I don't know if that bill's going to move forward or not, maybe that creates an opportunity to talk about contribution levels into 411, as you guys know, the employee contribution is capped at a certain level, and beyond that level, the entire expense falls on the city and taxpayers. And the problem with that is that, in times like this, where you've seen market performance tumble within a period of days, then, assuming, you know, we don't recover right back to where we were when this happened, the city's or the taxpayer's obligation for 411 is just gonna spike next year, because market performance has been so bad. And you don't know what that obligation is, so it's hard for you to plan and set aside enough funds to pay for that, without knowing you're gonna be able to do so without raising taxes. So, anything we could do, I think, to put more predictability into the system, I'd like to address this workers' comp position or situation somehow, I'm not sure this bill is the best vehicle to do that, maybe a study committee during the interim would be a better method for doing so, so we could take a look at what other options might be out there, maybe there's some kind of gap workers' insurance, workers' comp insurance that we could take a look at, I think we just need a better idea of what the options are. So, that's a long-winded way of saying, probably not much is going to change this session.
Thank you.
And I can add maybe a little bit on to that, is, just my viewpoint is, you know, police and fire are so important, and deserve our respect, sometimes there's a cost, not saying that nobody disrespects them, I maybe used the wrong word there, but they, they deserve our support in their retirement, and, you know, they put their lives on the line every day for us, and their job is much more complex today than any other time in their lives, so, I think supporting them and funding their retirement, I've, a long time ago said I support that, so, I don't know of any current legislation that changes that this year, Charles may know more about that, but there was a bill that passed, I know, Matt, you made a comment on, or a question on this, it was House File 2592, was a benefit package that passed yesterday, 98 to 1, and that is one that is, if something happens to, something comes up in a couple of years after they retire, health-wise, then we support that, so, it, and it is gonna be a funding that we need to pay for their doctors, and workman's comp, things like that, so, that bill did pass, and is headed to the Senate, you know, I support worker, or local controls, but I do think we need a floor there for our state, and to support these people that put themselves in a hazardous situation every day, so, that's a little piece of that, but I don't think that was a bill you were talking to, but I know Matt had asked that question, too.
That actually is the bill.
Okay, that is the bill.
So, 2592 is, and this is kind of Senator Schneider was talking about, is, there's, there's considerations in that bill in terms of a five-year timeframe-
Right.
-after a member retires, in terms of a look back, and I think, to Senator Schneider's point, I think what's concerning for cities is there is no good determination of what that may cost us, in terms of funding that, and although the bill does increase the members' contribution by a little, a little bit, it doesn't determine, okay, where's the balance at, and although it does give us some flexibility in terms of how to manage those medical costs of the, that we have in the current system, when we have a disability retirement of a member, which is something we want to support, but it could give us some more flexibility there, there was a little caution from the cities of, well, we don't know what it's costing on the other side, and the 411 system wasn't able to determine at this point, and I, I lean a little bit towards, you know, what Senator Schneider, what you said, in terms of what the, what's happening in the market right now, and not knowing what the impacts are gonna be on the system related to that, I would be very hesitant to make any changes to 411 until we know what that looks like, and what we encourage the Iowa League of Cities, and I know they've brought this up, is to have that interim study and look, and I think we want to try to get that workers' compensation piece right, and I think there's also a benefit to the member cities of thinking about the, how we cover the medical costs of a disabled member more efficiently than we are today for taxpayers as well, that's a benefit, I think there's a win-win there, but I think we need more time to kind of work through that and figure it out, and now with the current financial situation, I don't know if now is the right time to do that, and, and so we would definitely be interested in interim study on that, for sure.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Good, good discussion and good question. John, anything?
Revenue estimates came out today, what's your read on those?
They, they came in, they were largely, for the most part, unchanged from what they have been before, they're recommending, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it's, I think, less than $20 million impact this fiscal year, as a result of coronavirus, they're estimating a growth of, I think, 1.8% of revenue for the next fiscal year, and then 4.1% the year after that. So I think the important lesson for us is that, we don't know what, I mean, there are a lot of unknowns right now, the impacts of coronavirus, impacts of global trade, still working themselves out, so, we want to be fiscally responsible with how we approach the budget, make sure that we're not committing ourselves to obligations that we're not certain we'll be able to fund in the future.
Susan, question?
I was going to ask about that, too, I know it was 12.3 million-
Okay.
-reduction that was estimated, so I wondered what the impact would be.
Yeah, and of that, it's important to note, too, there's, they're already projecting, or before that reduction, let me start over, it's important to remember that they were estimating that we were going to have about a $400 million surplus, so, what that RE, the revenue estimating conference number really means, is that we'll have 12 million less in surplus, so we'll still have upper 300s, lower 400 million dollar surplus this year.
Michael?
I don't have a question, other than just a comment of thanking you both for being here, and being accessible, and Charles, for the years we've worked together, I appreciate it, and also, a thank you, maybe more importantly, to Lisa, and she may be breathing a sigh of relief finally as well, soon again.
She's happy now, I hope she is, a year from now, too.
Yeah, so thank her for us as well, but, appreciate it.
Indeed, indeed. Ted, anything on your end, for our legislators?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Yeah, you guys may not be able to answer this, and if that's okay, if not, that's okay, but having just traveled to Atlanta, I'm just curious, can you give any insight into what we're doing at a state level to prepare for the coronavirus, because, I mean, it's, it's pretty serious, what's going on, so.
Yeah, that's a good question, Ted. The Governor's been working, she's convened an emergency operating task force to help coordinate things at the state level, and push information out to the local level as well. So if you go to the Iowa Department of Public Health's website, you'll see all kinds of information on there about coronavirus. My understanding is that this team is coordinating with the local emergency management teams, like the Polk County Emergency Management, and hopefully, that information is getting disseminated out to you at the local level. After the Des Moines Public Schools declared that they were going to delay the resumption of classes after spring break, I just went online to see what was on their website for K-12 guidance, and, you know, they have, it's very easy to find, they do have, you know, a checklist of things to do, and they, I, it's my understanding, they're actively working with school districts, and also asking them to work with the department, so that we're all playing from the same playbook. We want to make sure everyone's safe, but it's a, you know, it's a delicate balance, trying to make sure that we're not overreacting, but at the same time, also making sure that we're aware of what's going on, and that we're prepared to act under any situation.
You know, maybe add to that, Ted, I think it's important that we do rely on the officials, and take our guidance from the Iowa Department of Public Health, and not, we want to make sure we're, if we retweet, we put things on social media, that it's, it's being vetted through there, because they really have a handle on it, and I think they have a plan, what, if this happens, we do this, if this happens, we do this, and I think that we should listen to it, and, but, most of all, be very cautious about taking just anything and spreading it, I think we rely on the experts only, and make sure that we do our part, and help get that message out, because it is an important time, and there's a lot of angst out there in the community, so, wherever we can help, we should.
You're saying, don't listen to the politicians, listen to the public health.
I would say, yeah, since this is being taped, I gotta be careful what I do say, like, don't listen to them any of the time, but this is one that I think I would probably listen to the, the right authorities, because they are the experts.
I'm not listening to politicians.
Fair enough.
We had, we had a brief update from Polk County last night at our mayor's meeting as well.
Oh, goodness.
It was very specific, they, very well done, great information, even right here at the county level, that we lean on, obviously, certainly our colleagues from the state, but even more immediately with our colleagues from the county, particularly Polk County, from the city of Clive, so, probably have the situation well in hand, but it's, everyone acknowledges, this is pretty serious.
Yeah.
So, but not to overreact as well.
Yeah.
To our friends, thank you, thank you both for being here with us, thank you for your service, we're all better for it, I think, and, so, thank you for coming in this evening. Council, if there's nothing else for, for these gentlemen, we're gonna, we're gonna thank them, and wish them Godspeed.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, thanks for having us.
So, this will take us now to citizens' presentation, this is where anyone in the council chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda, is there anybody here to do so? Seeing none, we're gonna move to consent items, please.
Who's the resolution?
Seconded by Eric, further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Yes, I gotta get my agenda back up.
It passes 5 to 0. Okay, now, we'll move to, move to action items, we have two public hearings, the first public hearing is regarding a 2020 residential PCC rehabilitation project on Clark, we're announcing, we need to announce publication on that, Matthew, did we post appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, there, it was published February 28th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew, and Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, we received bids recently on the first of two full-depth patching projects we'll be completing this year, the first one will be in residential areas across the city, I received four bids, as you probably noticed, there's a little more variation between high and low bids than we typically see, Caliber Concrete was red low, they recently completed work last year for us in Canary Park, so there is a history- completed work last year for us in Canary Park, so there is a history with them. After reviewing and comparing their unit prices, we would be recommending award to Caliber Concrete for the listed amount. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, counsel. Eric?
Jim, is this the same kind of full-deck patching that we did over on Woodcrest right there?
That's correct. Similar to what we've done in the past, removing full panels and then replacing those with a new.
Who did that project for us?
TK Concrete, who also bid here. They've done quite a bit of work on these types for us in the past.
Any reservations about Caliber? I know they've done some work for this in the past, but.
No, not at this time, no.
Other questions, counsel?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving plans and specifications.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Michael. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council Passes five to zero.
Move their seat of bids.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Michael. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council That passes five to zero.
And move the resolution, wanting the contract to Caliber Concrete, the low bidder for $494,377 and one cent.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Michael. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council That passes five to zero. Jim, thanks for your good work. Okay, our second public hearing is regarding the fiscal year 2021 budget. And Matt, did we post appropriate public notice?
Yes, that public hearing notice was published February 27th in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we're happy to present to you the city manager's proposed budget for the next fiscal year, starting July 1, 2020, running through June 30th, 2021. Over the last couple of months, we've been obviously conversing quite a bit on this proposed budget in terms of the impacts to the various main operating funds and departments of the city. With this year, we are looking at revenue growth, particularly on the property tax side, related to the city's recent growth, revaluation, and also taxing of financing release. At the same time, we're proposing expenditures to also keep up with that growth with the addition of three new patrol officers in the police department, a building inspector position, and then a right-of-way operations specialist in the public works department. In addition, this budget also delivers on providing additional support to our relationship with the city of Urbendale for Station 43 that just opened, actually is just operational now this week, about three days ago, and is responding to calls in the Clive community. And so those, as the council will recall, those expenses will start to ramp up now that that station is fully operational and we have full staffing at that facility. And this budget also satisfies those financial requirements and that relationship with Urbendale. So with that, Your Honor, happy to answer any questions, but we're very happy with where the budget's at and appreciate both the council deliberations on this over the last couple of months and then staff support in terms of putting these proposals together.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to echo part of your comments about the vetting, the council work, working on this a good portion of the year so that our budgeting process really is an efficient process. I want to call it a non-moment, and I think that's a good thing to be able to do that because that means we're managing it all the time. And so I commend staff and council for those efforts. Are there other questions, counsel? Eric?
Matt, just want to confirm that our property taxes, the property tax level will not increase with this budget. Is that correct?
Correct. It will be maintained at the $10.14 levy, the second lowest currently in, out of the major cities in the metropolitan area.
Thank you.
Others?
What's that?
Who's that lowest?
Eltuna.
Even with the race, your current, anyways, we'll talk about that later.
That one doesn't count.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Horrock, 14104 Briarwood Lane, Urbendale, Iowa. I'm the president of Clive Community Services. I want to thank you all for your continued support of our organization. Also, if any of you are curious about how we're planning to handle the coronavirus problem, the clerk has copies of our pandemic plan, if any of you are curious about how we're planning to serve its citizens that way. Thank you.
Stephanie, thank you for your great work. But we're all very in tune to what you're doing there, and you've done so much in such a short period of time. So thank you for being here and for doing what you do. So we have, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Is there anybody else to speak on this item? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving the budget.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council And that passes five to zero. Nice work, everyone. There's a reason why we have a AAA bond rating, and this is one of those reasons. So thank you, everybody, for your great work. Okay, we've moved the agenda around just a little bit. We have Ms. Leslie from MWA to share with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I sure appreciate it. I know most of you are very well familiar with Metro Waste Authority and our services, so I'll keep the presentation quite brief. Leslie Earlback, deputy director for Metro Waste Authority. As you know, Metro Waste Authority, we actually just celebrated our 50th anniversary last year, but we're one entity that's providing answers for safe and smart waste and disposal and recycling services. And we're doing that really through three primary ways. One, our service to the community. Two, through environmental protection. And three, through education. And I'm going to give brief examples of that over the next couple of minutes of those three areas. Here are the facilities that we manage, two landfills, two transfer stations, hazardous waste facility, and a compost center. One of the primary ways, in addition to those six facilities that we're servicing our member communities, including Clive, are through the garbage recycling and yard waste programs that we oversee. And we'll do a deeper dive specifically into garbage collection here in just a couple of minutes. But in addition to these services, we also have hazardous waste processing that we do for the communities as well. And really, as having one agency in the metro that is providing these services, it's an opportunity to minimize duplication and keep our rates among the lowest in the country. Metro Waste Authority's vision is no wasted resources, and we do this by giving significant consideration to the needs of the community overall. So beyond those facilities and the services that I just previously mentioned, we do this in the community by looking around and identifying what gaps aren't being filled by others, both in terms of public and private entities. Some examples of that in the past have included when the construction and demolition recycling processor in the community closed their doors and there really wasn't an opportunity to handle that material between Denver and Chicago, Metro Waste Authority was called upon by our board and those that we serve to provide that service. And we started a pilot program we're quite proud of within a six-month period of time. We've also continually evolved what does convenience look like for our residents. We know some of the barriers of people properly disposing of things include education, where do things go, and then the second piece is convenience. How do we make it as easy as possible for people to do the right thing? Ultimately, many people do want to. A unique way that you may or may not be familiar with that we're serving the community, gosh, almost two years ago now, when the flood and the tornado hit the region in a brief period of time, Metro Waste Authority was in the forefront, helping communities figure out how we were going to handle the storm debris. And since then, we've been working proactively with Polk County Emergency Management and many others to come up with a plan, because it's not a matter of if, but when something similar happens again. So stepping away from community a little bit and onto environment, as you all are quite familiar with, the recycling markets over time have collapsed. It's become a little less lucrative to recycle and quote, do the right thing in keeping certain things out of the landfill. And Metro Waste Authority, with the support of our board of directors, hasn't necessarily developed those programs because it's lucrative to do so, but it's the right thing to do so. And even in some instances, these materials flat out cannot go to the landfill at all. And so up in front of you, there's four items that we have found problematic in maintaining markets over the last couple of years. But we're really proud of the staff at Metro Waste Authority and the board's support that has allowed us to be innovative and to find alternative ways to not only sustain programs, but build really strong programs that are sustainable over a long period of time. Finally, through education. Education takes a lot of different shapes at Metro Waste Authority. Specifically, though, we're really blessed to have a full-time educator that goes into classrooms. Last year alone, we provided 245 classroom presentations. We also have an environmental learning center out on the south side of our landfill, where provides an opportunity for kids and teachers to come and do hands-on learning in the field. And through that, we also have a professional development, a Teach the Teacher program. Traditionally, that's taken place also out of the landfill, but just this summer coming up, we'll be launching a new professional development training program focused on water quality with communities in the western suburbs, specifically getting teachers and kids out, focusing on water quality and kind of being an extension really of the work that the communities are already doing anyway, but giving kids an opportunity to, you know, get a little bit dirty, but do some learning outside of the classroom as well. And that extended professional development opportunity came through some of the support of the environmental, the EPA, through a $100,000 grant that we received from them. So looking forward, as many of you are very well aware at this point, we will be opening a new recycling center in Grimes in the fall of 2021. We're really excited to be able to launch and sustain a really strong, stable recycling program that all of our member communities and residents can be proud to participate in. And we're going to do that through one of three ways. One, we're going to invest in the technology that's necessary to do that. It's just not feasible to continue to sort and handle recyclables today with equipment that's 10, 15, even 20 years old. And so we're taking a strong look at the technology that's needed to create good product that people are eager to purchase and recycle ultimately. We're also going to do that through education. We have a great foundation, but that's only going to strengthen as we move forward. And third, we're going to do it through relationships. You know, we have a philosophy that you treat people well in the good times and the bad times, and they'll do the like for us as well. And so markets aren't great right now. However, we do know through existing relationships and those that we're building that there is a demand for material. Even China is still buying recyclables. It just needs to be high-quality material and doing that through established relationships as well. So finally, my last slide, I think one that will be of interest of the councils to talk a little bit about is maybe an evolved way that Metro Waste Authority can support the city of Clive. There's a couple of models for handling solid waste in the region, two particularly that are going to be of interest to you. One is the current model that Clive handles, which is city staff manage their solid waste contract through an outsourcing with a hauler. And the second model that eight existing communities and four potential communities are looking at, which is having Metro Waste Authority manage that garbage contract on behalf of the city. And so I mention this now because the city of Clive is nearing the completion of their initial term of their solid waste contract. There's some one-year renewal options available, but this also could be a time that the city reconsideres the path forward on whether or not it's a time to have Metro Waste Authority handle the day-to-day as well as the overall contract of solid waste. And so if you're wondering what that looks like, really, it looks like exactly what our relationship with Clive looks like in the way that you offer recycling and yard waste services currently to your residents. On a detailed level, that means we manage the RFP, we manage the haulers, we hold them accountable to do what they say they're going to do per the contract, we oversee the day-to-day operations. If there are any challenges that come up, we resolve those between the resident and the hauler. And then we also handle the customer service. And we're excited that through the board's support, we're evolving our customer service program. We've hired our first customer service staff person, and so we, over time, will be internalizing all of those calls in the customer service. And so, you know, there won't be any calls that leave the state. They'll be right here in the region. People will be talking about people, to people that know, that know your community. And so with that, there are a number of other specifics that I can get into, but I think, Matt, if I could maybe ask you to jump in and provide some of your insight, too.
Thank you, and thank you, Leslie, for giving that summary. As we talked a little bit at the end of the last meeting, staff has been discussing with Metro Waste here over the last number of months. And there's really this regionalism opportunity in front of us. We would be kind of based on where the conversations are going. We do have those two paths and the renewal options and this more regional approach. We would be kind of one of the few communities that aren't in the group, and that would kind of concern me for the long term in terms of our negotiating leverage, in terms of efficiency with haulers, in terms of them kind of thinking about their week, in terms of how they're trying to spread the costs of their trucks and what that may mean. And the low rates that we have today, is there another option forward where we can, we can stay close to those low rates that we have, or maybe slightly higher, but then not have the big jump when our current, if we were to go through the three one-year extensions, and that's probably the biggest concern that I had as I was going into this. And so really appreciate Metro Waste's leadership on this in terms of doing some, having an engineer brought in, doing some analysis to say, okay, what is the most efficient way to do this in the region in terms of solid waste? And to make sure that also we have some, some strong haulers at the same point in time that are being competitive with one another in this market. And so I think a key part of this regionalism approach is that we're, it isn't all going to one hauler, that we're going to keep multiple haulers doing business in the metro area and then competing with each other for, for our businesses as cities. And so what makes sense for, what communities does it make sense for us to be paired with in terms of making it most efficient for that week of collection, that, and optimization for those assets that are from these haulers? And so as we dug in more on this and kind of looked at our current contract and realized there'll be some things that we'll need to talk about, some more kind of small, unique things that we have in our contract that could or could not be considered going forward, but I think those are all items that are definitely ones that we can, we can discuss and figure out a path forward on. And so my recommendation, staff's recommendation to you tonight, is to consider this and approve this memorandum of understanding with Metro Waste, basically taking the negotiating lead from what was, what was previously city staff over the last number of decades to transferring that to the Metro Waste Authority, similar to what they're doing for all of the other communities likely, except for us, and also putting it in more of an expert's wheelhouse in terms of how we can negotiate with these haulers. And also, I think from a, from a staff perspective, we're really interested in the staff capacity building that we could get internally from doing this. So a lot of the things that Leslie mentioned, those are the things that staff is currently doing, currently managing the customer service and managing their direct communications with waste management, managing the contract, having to, having to hold that accountability and not necessarily having the expertise in all of those areas. And so I think from a staff capacity perspective, this makes a lot of sense for us, and it doesn't cost us anything to do that. As apart owners and members of the Metro Waste Authority, I think other communities have taken advantage of that, and I think it's, it's time for Clive to take advantage of the same. And so I would recommend the council's consideration of this memorandum of understanding and then kind of the next steps that come from that, is then Metro Waste and staff would work together. They would be negotiating on behalf of us, and then we would be bringing back, they would be bringing back a contract to you for what the solid waste hauling would look like for the, starting the next fiscal year, July 1. And then the transition plan that would go along with that regards to toters, collection days, all those kind of details are the things that we would work out here in the coming months to bring back to you all.
Matt, thank you. A lot there, a lot of good stuff there. But let's go to questions. We have.
Five pages that I've prepared.
Please give them to me.
Eric, go ahead.
As I said, I appreciated Leslie's work.
Notice I didn't recognize him.
Good question, Leslie. Electronic waste is a growing threat, and it's a big problem. How do you guys deal with that? And what are some course of action to really be more efficient with that in the future?
So our, how, one of the niches that we felt in terms, filled in terms of convenience is modifying our household hazardous waste program. We are evolving the efficiencies and rolling that out, community by community, so that there are. there are options for residents to dispose of that right from their curb, at their house, actually, I don't know how to get all the way to their curb. And we're slowly adding some electronic waste into that because really, I like to call it like a good, better, best model. It really kind of meets people where they want to be. Some people, their driving factor is convenience, and as people move up that spectrum to better and best, it becomes, I want to do the right thing. And so right now, oftentimes, the right thing is taking things to our hazardous waste facility and boundary it. As we further develop that site in Grimes, there'll be more potential opportunities for residents to take electronic waste there, to have it recycled as well. We also have a robust amount of information on our website. We have a recycling guide. Sometimes the most convenient or economical way to get rid of those things isn't actually through a Metro Waste Authority facility. You know, if you buy a computer, oftentimes, some retailers will take it back. And so just building that education so people can figure out where they fall on that spectrum and make their own decisions is the best. But we're growing a number of our programs in terms of Grimes, boundary, and house site to accommodate for that.
Thank you.
I'll make another comment on the customer service, and you all really are really the subject matter experts here, you know? And when our staff has been, has encountered interesting customer service situations, we've defaulted to you. You've been there and have helped us and have come alongside us over the years. Just no question about that. So that's appreciated. Other comments or questions?
How are the supplemental cardboard recycling spots doing in communities?
They are very popular. We continue to modify that. Right now, we're at a three-day-a-week collection period. We've rolled them out in approximately half of the communities. We hope that as we get one in every single community, the response in the communities that have them will level out a little bit more. But with us having our own truck now to be able to collect at those sites, we can very easily modify collection schedules. Unfortunately, at this time, the weekends are the popular times, and so we're needing to discuss a little bit more. How do we meet the weekend demand with our limited staffing capacity during that time? But the response has been overwhelming. We knew that there was a decent percentage of waste going to the landfill that just was comprised of cardboard, but to see it at the facilities, if you've seen the one in Clive or neighboring communities, it's overwhelming. And so we're really excited to visually see that service take shape in the community. So thank you for your support of that program.
Matt, do you have anything for Leslie, or Matt, or Michael for that matter?
Well, what I was just going to, what I was just going to say is that I have a general rule that anything that benefits or helps to make Mike McCoy look good, I'm against. But in this case, since Leslie's involved, I'll support it.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Theodore.
Clearly, he's in a relaxed state. He's on vacation.
Do you have a resolution?
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion?
Just may I be abstaining?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? That passes four in favor with one abstention. Thank you very much. Thank you, Leslie, for your great work, as always.
I'll roll behind as you wish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move back on the agenda now to the new item four, which is proposed utility rate adjustments for fiscal year 2021. Joyce?
So as we have approved the budget, we prepared the three ordinances for the water, the sewer, and the stormwater utility rates that coincide with our budget. 3% increase in the water, 3% in the sewer, and then 10% in stormwater. So, and as we have done in the past, the rates go in effect May 15 to June 15, and they get billed July 1. So they would be coming into the July 1 revenue stream for the new budget.
We need to reach, obviously, first consideration this evening of each of these ordinances. We need to read them separately. Questions for Joyce, council?
I will move that ordinance number 1089. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero.
Move, got it. Move that ordinance number 1090. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote?
Short time, I was distracted.
Passes five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1091. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Thank you, Joyce. Okay, next item is Shadow Creek North rezoning. And Amanda, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So tonight, before you have the third and final consideration of the rezoning for approximately 177 acres in the Shadow Creek North area, that's going from R1 to PUD. There's just been some minor tweaks in the master plan labeling items to correspond with the development agreement. We haven't received any public comment on the rezoning, so I can talk a little bit about some of the highlights in that development agreement. It's pretty similar to our previous Shadow Creek developments in regards to the single-family area. We're continuing on those Westgate Parkway design standards. The minimum home sizes are the same as what was in Shadow Creek Four, also with a continuation of the Architectural Review Committee that was established for Shadow Creek Four. The mixed residential and commercial development areas pull a lot of the parking, landscaping, building materials, those kinds of requirements are pulled from other similar development agreements that have had those components in it. So with that, I'll take any questions from you guys. Staff would recommend approval, and we do have representatives here from the project tonight.
Council, questions?
I'd move that ordinance number 1087 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? The pass is five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1087 is declared to have been enacted.
Move that ordinance number 1088 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1088 is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Amanda, and we like you so much. We're going to keep you up here for two more topics. The next one is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to covenants in Shadow Creek.
Yes. So similarly to one of the changes for the Shadow Creek North development area was removal of the coach light requirement along Westgate Parkway. Talked about that a little bit at the last meeting. I know the mayor was supportive, since he's got one in his front yard. So with this...
It doesn't work, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah, for the record.
So that largely gets to why we've talked with the development team, and they'd be interested in removing that requirement from only the Westgate Parkway portion in Shadow Creeks Three and Four. There's several reasons for that. One, as the mayor pointed out, it's largely a nuisance for the developers and then the property owners to have the coach lights. And we do have other features along the parkways that keep that pedestrian scale, like the decorative streetlights, the trees, and landscaping. So we think aesthetically, we're accomplishing the same goal largely without the coach lights. And it's only a quarter-mile section approximately of Westgate Parkway. The portion that's in Waugh Key to the south does not have any coach light requirement, and the big chunk on the east side of the road that is the courtyards at Shadow Creek also would not have any of those coach light requirements since none of those homes front onto Westgate Parkway. So there's only 13 properties that front onto the Parkway in this portion of Westgate that could have the requirement, and we have not included it when you cross the future bridge to the north development. So staff would be supportive of removing the requirement, just to simplify that for those property owners on the Westgate portion to the south. And Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their last meeting and also recommended approval.
Self-disclosure, trigger a compliance officer? Check those lights?
I did threaten to send Mark after him last time, but the trust will take care of it.
I'll just be waiting, I'm sure.
Resolution for plat 03.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero.
Move the resolution for plat 04.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, we'll move to item seven now, which is the Deerfield Point rezoning. Amanda, a topic you're all too familiar with.
Yes. So here tonight, we're asking you to receive and file the second application for the Deerfield Point rezoning and also set public hearing for April 9. Planning and Zoning Commission, assuming you set public hearing, will consider the request at their April 2 meeting. So the request is to rezone approximately 17-point acres from C4 to PUD. As I said, this is the second application. As you all probably recall, the first application was withdrawn on January 9. That was pulled by the developer. They wanted more time to work on some issues the neighborhood had raised. So they have submitted an entirely new application, new form, new application fees, new signed consents from property owners to meet that 50% of owners of the land area. And then just a clarification for the council's benefit, there was some confusion with some of the neighboring property owners on the application on the website. There is a list of all of the properties within the 310-foot notification area. That is not representative of anyone that has signed a consent or protest, either in favor or against the rezoning. That is just the notification area list. It's a standard part of the application. Staff has since added a red heading to that to try to draw attention to that for the public's benefit. It is the further down, there are forms labeled consent to rezone property. Those have applicant or, sorry, property owner signatures. Those are the only people at this time that have expressed any consent. We've had some calls concerned with that. Just wanted to let everyone know. And for anyone who may be here tonight or listening later on YouTube, further benefit to just clarify that there's been some confusion there. We will be sending out notices of the hearing following setting the public hearing, and we did proactively inform the town home association officers that the application had been submitted. So they are aware of that, and we let them know their next steps if they would like to raise any concerns with the project. So with that, BJ Connolly is here tonight as the local representative. If you do have any questions, but staff would recommend setting the public hearing for April 9.
Thank you, Amanda. So we're literally just setting the public hearing for this evening. Do you have anything to add on changes that have been made at this point to the application? And thoughts about that?
There have been some reduction. A few of the buildings have been reduced to a two-story height instead of a three-story height that are closer to that north property line. So from what I've heard, nothing solid yet, but it seems like some of the neighbors, that addressed a lot of the concerns that they had. There's also incorporation of a more formalized trailhead bike share area within the site plan. So we have a new submittal we've received. We'll be reviewing with some other minor changes.
Council, any questions for Amanda while she's with us? Eric, go ahead.
Any change in landscaping, the screening between the development portion and the residence?
Sure. So a full landscaping plan hasn't been submitted, but the site plan does feature the eight-foot-tall fence with the brick columns. I think it was at a 30-foot interval. So that is shown as a solid fence. At one point, an intermittent one had been proposed. It's currently being shown solid along the north property line and a portion of the west property line. Otherwise, they are showing a kind of a generic landscaping infill with trees. We don't have the information on species and types and all of that that would be worked out at the site plan process.
Okay. Other questions for Amanda? Mike?
Yeah, just so it's before the public hearing, you know, we had a lot of concerns. It seemed to be a large disconnect between the developer and the owners, the homeowners and townhome owners behind. And that has since been repaired, and they're having those communications and those conversations. I just hate to get up to the same place we were last time and see no change in that. There was a lot of concerns from those townhome owners.
Absolutely. Staff also hopes to avoid the same kind of confrontation at the meetings. So I'd let BJ speak specifically to the outreach they've done. I do know they have met with some of those association officers and that there's been some conversation around having some public meetings with them that city staff are not a part of that would be outside of the hearings, but I'd let BJ answer any more specific questions on that.
BJ, why don't you come on up and just, because I know we're going to have a public hearing, but I think it's prudent to have this discussion now.
BJ Connolly, 2749 Northwest 166, Clark, Clive.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, there's been outreach with the neighborhood association, board members, and some leaders and whatnot. I think the best way to put it is that the developer heard loud and clear last time what the issues were with the neighbors. I don't want to speak on behalf of the neighbors. I feel like there has been improvement. The plan that has been submitted, there has been a focus put on the neighbors, the residential neighbors of the property, and for instance, the fence that's going up around in the landscaping. So the fence is going to be on the property of the proposed development, the new development, with quite a bit of space behind the fence, which is still, it's going to be owned and maintained by the proposed apartment complex. However, it's going to be fenced off to the tenants of that complex. And a majority of the landscaping filling in the gaps of the trees on that berm is going to be placed behind that fence. So it's going to be of a benefit to the residents. Again, the apartment owner will maintain it and whatnot, but it's for the residents and their benefit.
So it's not right up to their property line, and so you have a setback from...
Exactly. So there's a further setback than what's typical, I think, is what... And so, I mean, typically, the, an apartment developer would like to see, you know, some of that for their tenants and whatnot and their community, but they're definitely putting an emphasis on that portion of the property and that buffer on the neighbors there.
What other, I guess, just further the question, what other improvements have you made?
They went from three stories to two stories in some of the buildings. They removed the, bringing a bike trail essentially through the property and just put a trailhead over near the Walgreens for access to the Raccoon River Trail. They've added some electric vehicle chargers and stations and whatnot, and some other things. They removed a, you know, public dog park there because the neighbors did not like the thought of that. So it'll be for the residents, essentially.
Well, to Councilmember McCoy's point, I do not want to be at the next meeting and have neighbors stand up and say, this isn't the plan that we can live with.
Yeah.
So...
Neither do I.
We're having that conversation now.
Right. Yeah.
Matt or Doug, can you give an update on staff's position with the changes? And I want to do this now. I know we're setting a public hearing, but I don't want there to be any wuggle room
I think at this point, staff's position is we haven't had enough time to work through this new application. We want to have opportunity to fully get through it, put together a staff comment letter, have the opportunity to have further conversations with the adjacent property owners, kind of see where they're at, really understand and refine in on the dialogue and the discussions that have had, been had between those parties. And then we can incorporate whatever other technical changes are necessary in the plan. A few of the kind of broader concepts that were discussed in terms of the PU... A few of the kind of broader concepts that were discussed in terms of the PUD, again, you need to continue to work through those in terms of this issue of the public-private partnership and the relationship with the open space. What are the other public goods that are coming along with an alternate parkland dedication concept? Again, a lot of those details will need to continue to be fleshed through. We will certainly have those in hand and identified either for or against and have a recommendation to you at the time of the public hearing.
Doug, thank you. Loretta, I'm going to ask you to come up and speak on behalf of your group there, if you don't mind, for just a moment.
That's very kind of you.
If you would come up and state your, come up and state your name and address for the record of being that we don't, both of you can come up.
Sure.
There's room for more than one, if you want to come up.
No, we weren't going to speak tonight.
Well, but I'd like you to speak, just because I think it's a good time to have.
I will tell you what I feel.
Yes.
Loretta Seaman, I live in Clive now. BJ came to us and he presented to the people in charge, the presidents of the different organizations. One of them could not come, but I understand from Amanda, he's not necessarily in the 350 feet, so that was okay. And BJ listened to the changes they wanted and he was going to go back with a couple others. They're very, the people that are directly involved are very pleased about the fence and what that's going to do. They're happy with that. They were happy about the buildings that were put down to the second floor as opposed to a third floor. There are two buildings they're still concerned about and BJ was going to talk to them about it at the end of the complex, which then reaches ours, of which Mary is in charge. We want to have, once he had talked with them about those particular issues, then, and the traffic study. They're very, they just don't understand the traffic study. So BJ was going to work with bringing in somebody that could explain how they decide this happens, who is a professional in it. So that would help them a lot. And what they're, they want to see what they come back with, he has to meet with them again. And then he has agreed to bring everybody in. What I would say to you is you have a group of people who this is probably their last home. They're seniors, they're very proud of living in Clive, they're very proud of their homes. If you drive up and down the street, they're very neat, they take care of them. I mean, I've been in a lot of situations where they don't. They're just wanting to work together and I think BJ is willing to work. He now has Mary involved. And so I think, I believe that, I've also talked to Richard Hurd, and he said that he wants this to come out for the betterment of everyone. So I do believe if BJ gets some of these things done that the group wants, I think you won't have the same problems. Before, I would say, and I would say this to BJ, but I said it to Richard, the way it was presented, the two groups clashed right from the beginning. And there wasn't a lot of, and I'm not saying about BJ, but there wasn't a lot of on the side of the developer to understand what these residents were concerned about. And they are concerned, but they're also pleased of being in Clive. So I think you have to realize when they came here, they really thought you would listen. And as I know in past years, there's not everyone that always listens. So thank you for doing what you did for them, but there's a few things that BJ is going to clean up.
Thank you, Loretta, I appreciate that. BJ, unless you have something to add?
Nope.
Okay, so I think this is good discussion. I think this kind of sets the stage for staff going forward with the residents and with the developer. And I'm pleased with that, counsel, unless you have other questions, Eric.
Move to receiving file the zoning positions?
Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John to receive and file further discussion. Seeing now with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero.
Move the resolution, setting the public hearing of Deerfield Point rezoning to April 9th of 2020, 6:00 PM.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John to set the public hearing. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. That passes five to zero. Thanks, Amanda, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Always a pleasure.
You're welcome back anytime and you can stay, you feel free to stay if you'd like. We have some things to work through. All right then, we'll move to new item number eight, which is the 2020A General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds and the 2020B General Obligation Urban Renewal Public Safety Facility Bonds. Joyce?
Yes, so the next step in our process for the 2020A and 2020B bonds is setting the date of the sale for March 26th. And it also authorizes the use of the preliminary official statement that you received last week to review. So if you have no further questions, I also, I was in communication with Suzanne today at PFM over the market, and unfortunately, it's not what we'd hoped for. Obviously, 10 days ago, when we were having our credit call, everything was great, rates were looking really good. And then this past week, things have really taken a tumble. And of course, our bonds are long-term investments and investors are not, not big on them this week at all. She said, and just today alone, it was like 35 to 50 basis points drop on top of the 25 from yesterday. So she kind of laid out some scenarios for me. She advised we continue to.
Increase.
Excuse me, yes.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, we wish they were down, where they were. Excuse me, yes, they went up. She advises we continue to move forward. She said there's three scenarios. We could get no bids to act on, or we could get several bids that aren't worth acting on, or best case scenario, we have at least three bids and they're in good shape with our, would help us with our cash flow. So we'll just have to see what the next, next few weeks brings and we'll stay in close contact with them. But she said there, and the other thing too, is that week that we have our sale on Thursday, Waki will be selling bonds on Monday and Davenport will be selling some on Wednesday. So that will give us a low precursor. We'll see how the week goes with them and stay in close contact with Suzanne and hope for the best, so.
The council always has the right to reject bids, so for whatever reason, then we can reset a new sale date if, as things calm down. And the nice thing is cash, from a cash flow perspective, it's not like, we can delay it if we need to. We're not seeing the bids that we were expecting, so.
Yeah, I think that's the guidance that we need, yeah.
My thought is we have nothing to lose right here based upon if it's what we like or don't like, we don't have to move forward, so.
Yep.
How big a window do we have?
In terms of?
If they don't come in?
We would have a couple months.
Yeah.
Yeah, because on the, on the public safety side, you know, this is, we wanted to pair it with this bond issue. We don't need, obviously, we're not, we haven't, ready to construct the building, so we don't need the cash today on that. Some of the public, the public or the CIP-related projects are ones that are going to get started here in the spring, but they're not going to have a heavy cash load. So we do have a couple months on these if we need to do, go out that far. But I think it's, again, worth it to stick with our current schedule and we can always reset a new sale date if we need to.
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Joyce. All right, we'll move to item nine now, which is a resolution approving amendments to the fiber optic cable license application and fees. Jeff?
You skipped one?
I skipped one?
Yeah, nine.
The old number eight.
Resolution proving contract for professional services, mayor.
I don't think I have it on this one.
I should make the motion.
Yeah, because that skips, yeah, I've got John's here. It's different from what I'm holding, though.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so a resolution approving contract for professional services, Hoyzington Kogler Group Incorporated, District One Neighborhood Plan, $250,000.
Good evening again. As the mayor said, this is for our District One Neighborhood Plan. Over the last, oh gosh, three or four months, we've been working on the selection process. So we issued that RFQ on December 13th and accepted responses until January 12th. We had 11 firms respond that were all very qualified and we chose four that we interviewed. The selection committee unanimously recommended HKGI, I'm not going to try to pronounce the whole firm name, for our preferred, for us to move forward negotiating a scope and contract with. We really liked their approach to engagement and their partnership that they brought with Civic Brand. They also have the Emmons and Olivier Resources for their stormwater engineer and Marquette Advisors for the market analysis and kind of truthing those, those plans that might come forward to see if they're really marketable and deliverable. HKGI has a history of working within the metro and they've built some regional relationships that we're excited about. And we thought their team was really approachable and very well-rounded, so we're excited about working with them and getting the process going. Due to the nature of the neighborhood plan, staff in HKGI, when we were working on the scope, thought it would be most appropriate and beneficial to have the steering committee and the project management team be able to weigh in on the exact schedule and detailed engagement that would be presented as part of the planning effort. So you don't find those detailed very specifically in the scope. And that's why we wanted to get that, that larger input to be worked into the planning process. So as the mayor said, it's a $250,000 with not to exceed that amount that is budgeted and they have a $15,000 contingency included within that $250,000. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the contract.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. That item passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda. And let the record reflect that the mayor's agenda is always right. Those two items are flipped on my agenda. So Jeff, now it's a pleasure to have you up here and to talk about a resolution approving amendments to fiber optic cable license application and fee.
It's my pleasure to be up here.
Thrilling topic.
Great night for it. Hey, we'll get started then. Included in the budget you just passed was a position for a full-time operations specialist in right-of-way to manage our right-of-way, take in permits, oversee the construction in the right-of-way, help us with that with both small wireless facilities, fiber optics, Mid-American, Iowa DOT permits, Metro right-of-way permits, all those different things, and also to manage that construction as it goes on and help us with restoration. As part of that request, when we talked about it, we also proposed increasing the rates for our license fees for fiber optics to help cover a portion of those costs for that full-time position. Our estimate was about 50% of that position would be covered by the proposed rate increases and the addition of single wireless facility permits. So tonight, we're bringing you that license fee, license application and the fees associated with it. We'll increase the license fee from $200 to $500. That will match it to what the fee is for the single wireless facility. And hopefully, we can get that started and get in place. As part of this, there's also some other changes we want to look at. One is changing some of the wording for our license to permit and looking at a couple other things, and we're working on that currently. Hopefully, in the next meeting or two, we'll get all that in. As we reviewed it, we realized that the word license wasn't just in the section of, this section of the code also was in other sections, and we want to make sure we cover all, everything and make sure it's all copacetic as we come to you and say it's good to go. So I bring to you a request to amend our fiber optic cable application and license fee.
Questions, counsel? Eric?
Jeff, for those fee changes, does that consist with what Waki and Urban on West Des Moines pricing right there?
You know, we didn't really look. They're all over the board. Some, some communities charge a per foot for every foot of cable that's in the right-of-way. I'm not sure where that goes on the legality side and we're trying to stay away from that. We kind of set it up to where we'll try to be consistent with on our own permitting fees.
Other questions?
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote.
I voted, I didn't, I had to do it twice.
Ted, could you hit your vote again?
Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to reports now. Pete, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, your honor. So echoing some comments that were made by Senator Snyder before, we at the city have been trying to absolutely direct people to the Iowa Department of Public Health, Polk County Health, Dahlup County Health, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. All of those links are on the city's website. If you were asked, where do I find reliable information about those things, you can always direct them just to cityofclive.com because they're going to see those links front and center. In addition to getting that trusted information out through those partner organizations, cityofclive.com will also be where we post information about any changes to city services as well. So don't try and stay up with all the possible changes. That's not something you need to do. It's just as simple as it, just keep it simple and direct people if they have questions to the city's website. That's what's going to be our source of, our source of record for folks. And that's where we have the best ability to stay up to date with this very quickly changing situation. Second, we're coming up on the census. April, or probably already for some households in Clive, they received an invitation to participate in the census and they can participate by phone, mail, or online this year. The Census Bureau is working very hard to get applicants to complete the census but respond online. We don't have a preference one way or another. What we want is the most accurate count possible. We have one neighborhood that has historically sort of underperformed compared to the rest of the, the rest of the city and to the state of Iowa in general. tends to be some of our parts, our easternmost, the easternmost parts of the, of the city. And so to help spur more turnout, we've been using our regular communications channels, but we're also speaking with our other partners, the school district in particular, about other ways that we can kind of amplify the work that they're doing and that the Census Bureau is doing as well. Finally, we had a very nice, sort of small group, but a very nice group of folks who turned out to talk about the first phase of Clark Street last night. So we had about eight of us over in the library talking about the nuts and bolts of when we might be at, like, when we're likely to be in their part of the neighborhood, how we're going to do the trash, how we're going to do the school bus pickup, how we're going to fire and EMS response. Jim did a great job organizing that information for folks, both in the letter that was sent out to all of the residents who live along the streets where the work's going to be done in this phase. That's Clark Street and 104th. And last night, he did a great job also presenting that information and taking questions from folks. It's going to be a very busy summer for that neighborhood. It's going to be the first of many very busy summers for that neighborhood. To give you all a sense of when you are going to start potentially hearing from your constituents about this, Jim, am I correct, that the road closures for the first area, including the intersection between 104th and Clark, will be going up still this month? Is that?
Twenty-third.
Yeah, so our contractor is ready to rip and the weather seems to be working in our favor. We need all the time we can get to finish each one of these phases, especially this one that's going to involve that intersection and a big chunk of 104th and a big section there of Clark.
Excellent, Pete. Questions for Pete, counsel? A lot going on. Thank you, Pete. Eric?
CBB had issued a statement regarding the coronavirus and kind of how Des Moines area had, you know, it's that doesn't have the impact that some of the areas have. That's changed a little bit with the announcement. There has been some cases in the local area right here. I'm just glad that the NCAAs were here last year and not this year. I feel sorry for Omaha, which is hosting it, and I'm just, I would have very success for last year.
Yeah. That's revenue you never get back. Greg was on 13th this morning and, you know, this is really having a dramatic effect on all of us. Unfortunately, it's maybe just scratching the surface, so thanks, Eric, for that. John?
As you know, DART voted to raise their levy rate a half cent. I've dissented on that, just so you're aware. I've dissented on that, just so you're aware.
Nice job, councilman.
The professor filled in on the hard votes.
Nice job, Mayor Protown.
We got to bring the heavyweight in at times.
I understand. Any questions about that, council?
I think that was in line with what the council asked for the representative vote.
Appreciate the representation and, you know, and the discussion here. That's, that's what helps that. John, thank you. So, a couple of comments. Some of you may have heard that, well, it was with discussion tonight with Senate President Schneider that he will be stepping down and not seeking to be reelected next year for another four-year term. He's served as well. I have chosen to run for that position on behalf of our residents and some residents in West Des Moines and Waukees and unincorporated Dallas County and Windsor Heights. So, I want to set the, set the stage tonight with our staff here and with all of you. We're in execution mode here. We have a lot, we have a lot on the table in terms of the projects that we're working on. So, nothing, that, that just doesn't stop. I mean, we, my pledge to you is to stay focused on the work that we're doing, notwithstanding the jokes that my counterpart wants to crack over here. Trying to be serious, John.
Sorry.
But we have a lot to do, and the city of Clive is my focus. It has been for the last 17 years as I've served here. It's been my honor to serve here, and, you know, I get to serve the rest of the year here in this role with this team and with this team, and I'm grateful to do that. So, I want you to know that this is not a step that I take lightly. It's one that I have taken very seriously and thoughtfully with my family, with my employer and others. So, I look forward to the future, and the future is bright here in Clive. There's no question with the things that we're doing. So, I just wanted to just kind of put that out there and, and talk about it. I'm so grateful to each and every one of you for the work that you do and for the friendship that we have and for the culture that we have here. So, it's been my honor and my privilege, and it will continue to be. Thank you. Susan?
I'd just say that I attended the Central Iowa Taxpayers Association's session yesterday on understanding your property tax bill. There was a focus on Broadlines, DMAC, and DART there, and it was actually very well-attended and a good session. At my private employment, we're seeing a lot of conferences start to be canceled, probably expecting the Iowa Water Conference to be canceled, which is at Iowa State because another Iowa State conference was just canceled for landscape architects. And we're all undergoing special training tomorrow on making sure everyone is prepared to work remotely. So, I don't know if the city is taking steps to train people if that were to be an option, but it's something that's happening for most of us probably, so.
Indeed. Thank you, Susan. Mike?
Well, I mentioned, not on my committees, but on Metro Waste Authority side of it, we started that training today on how we'll keep the core services in place, especially the customer service, the office, some of the others, the scale house, and then rotate the operational folks if it starts to come in. We have two landfills to fill, so we've already had the cities calling, multiple cities asking what would happen if we exhausted all of our operators or if they were sick. So, we do have a contingency plan. We're working on that, with that as well. So, they were all geared up today with understanding the remote work model, so I think it'll be ready for that.
Excellent. Matt, council?
I'll just, I guess, add to Councilmember Weaver's question to our elected representatives about what is the state level doing and how you all can rely on, on that information. As you know, there are lead agencies for this, for any sort of crisis management, and right with my other hat on, the governor did stand up her State Emergency Operations Center on, on Sunday, and all of those constituents are at the table and working very well together, and all of those county emergency management folks are engaged. Everything looks to be as expected. So, I do want to reiterate and, I guess, encourage what you had already said, Miss, you know, Pete, and that is rely on those agencies' information, stick with that information, and preparedness is the best, and, you know, good information is the best course of actions. So, containment, right, is the answer for the issue. But I know that's not necessarily a legal issue, but it does play into a lot of things that the city does, and information is key to, to what you're doing. So, I want to encourage you to continue with those sources.
Thanks, Christine. I appreciate that very much. Very important. Ted, I'm going to go up to you because I skipped over you, being that you're not in front of me here. So, do you have anything to share with the council?
Yeah, I noticed that. I actually do. So, I attended the MPO exec board meeting yesterday. There were 15 applications submitted for the Surface Transportation Block Grant Award. John knows, he's familiar with that. One of those applications was our 8035 interchange request, and so those applications have all been submitted. And the interesting thing for us is the MPO ranks those, they, they rate them based off of different criteria. Out of the 15 that were submitted, ours was the second highest of the 15. So, we have a, point is, we have a very good chance of being awarded some money from the SDBG grant process. We'll find out how much that is and whether we're awarded that in May. But again, out of the 15, we were ranked second for the, the rating criteria that the MPO puts on that. So, that, that was very positive information. On the water trails front, Polk County has agreed to assist with the dam mitigation for the downtown dams, the design of that dam mitigation. So, that was also positive information, and the, the committee is in process of hiring an owner's rep. They're interviewing the three finalists, and all three finalists are local companies, McClure, Shy, and Snyder and Associates. So, for that water trail project, we should have an owner's rep here hired relatively soon, and is certainly going to be one of the companies that we recognize. On the transload facility front, they're in the midst of an environmental assessment, and they expect to be done with that within the next month or so, and that's kind of the next step to get that project moving forward. So, that's also moving forward. And then, the Highway 5 and Highway 65, transitioning that from what's currently called a bypass to an interstate, that's kind of been in the process for many years, but it's been on the back burner. I think it's more of a front burner issue now, and it's still going to take probably two to three years to get through the formal process, but it, it looks like it's moving forward. You know, and I asked the question, why is that truly important to us as a region to, to switch the name from a bypass to an interstate? And the answer that I got, and it was actually from our mayor of Pleasant Hill, was because it's, it's truly an economic development issue for the region. The example she threw out was that Pleasant Hill was eliminated from even consideration for Amazon to put in a facility because they have to be within a certain distance of an interstate. A bypass does not qualify. And so, it, it, you know, as silly as it may seem, we need to get that designation in order to help the economic development over on that side of town, which would obviously help the entire region. So, we're, they're working through that pretty diligently right now, and they're pretty focused on trying to get that to happen actively within the next two to three years. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ted. Great update. And yeah, I know that, that particular initiative that you just mentioned has been around for a long time. I understand it's, it's a pretty expensive one as well to make that conversion. It may not seem like it is, but I think there's, there's a lot there, and that's probably part of the reason why it's, it's languished for as long as it has. Thanks for the great information. Questions for Ted on any of those items? These are pretty important items. Ted, thank you. Matt?
Your Honor, to follow up on some of Councilmember Weaver's comments related to our Hickman interchange application, really happy with the, the strong rating that we received on that. And related to that, cities of Clive and Urbandale are currently in negotiations with the DOT. As you know, we have the 128th and Hickman project agreement that we've already adopted with the DOT to move forward with design this year and construction next year. Knowing that the interchange is coming down the line a number of years from now, there's a desire from the DOT to why we're doing the 128th and Hickman work to just extend that project east, to get all of the work done, to kind of set the stage for the interchange in terms of the six-laning and the turn lanes for Hickman up to the interchange, so through the Menards intersection with that project. It just seemed like that made sense in terms of a economy of scale, in terms of bidding a contract out. What that would mean is it'd be a little bit higher in terms of our contribution to that project in the neighborhood of, we were kind of talking to 250,000 for both us and Urbandale. That might be as high as 600,000 now in terms of our negotiations, but with the understanding that then the interchange project, other than submitting for MPO grants and being sponsors, that that would be on the DOT for the interchange. There's a lot more details that we're working out, stormwater impacts, some things that are near and dear to our heart in terms of the additional pavement that would be added because that water would be draining to us, that we want to at least have a conversation with the DOT about and see if we can work that through. But there'll be likely an amendment coming to you for that agreement that's already been approved, adding that additional work. And I think from both Urbandale's and our staff sense, it, it makes good sense to do that all as part of one project. That way, everything's ready to go in terms of providing that additional capacity when the interchange is being worked on and then everything to the west of there. So, that'll be coming forward. Don't have a date yet, but in the next month or so, we hope to have those details ironed out with the DOT. Also, as the mayor alluded to earlier, we did have a mylog meeting last night where the Capital Crossword Stormwater Initiative was presented, where that was a two, a discussion two years ago that really kicked off that effort. Was really happy with some of the comments that we heard around the, the room in terms of communities that are looking at the model ordinance, which has flexibility in it, you know, per community, in terms of looking at adopting those standards, and I was really happy to hear Waukees support for that and that they're likely going to be moving forward with adoption in the more near term, it sounded like, based on their mayor's reaction last night, and then some other communities sharing similar support, and then some wanting to vet it and understand it better. It's a, it's a very detailed ordinance, as you know, with our post-construction stormwater ordinance. So, I was happy to see some regional support around that, and hopefully, we're moving the needle a bit on those considerations, and obviously, we're particularly interested in what our neighboring communities are doing here in the Walnut Creek watershed. Related to the bond sale date that we set tonight, Monday, we should be receiving our Moody's rating, hopefully confirmation of our AAA, but that should be coming out on Monday. And then, lastly, to follow up on the coronavirus conversation, in terms of just giving you some background of what we're doing at a staff level, we had a, a long discussion today and executive team in terms of things that we're going to start planning for, kind of different phases of, of the potential spread, talking about, you know, for example, if we had a third of our workforce out with either the illness or being contained or under quarantine, what, what would that, how would that impact our services and how are we going to prioritize those services and what are some different operations that we would do? Also, we're talking about some of our more public gatherings, whether it's library programs, recreation programs, at which point, we're going to pull the trigger in terms of canceling those. I do intend tomorrow to send a communication out to staff to have them cancel any work-related travel outside of the state for the next 60 days, and that relates to something that I wanted to bring up with the council tonight related to the DC trip. I feel that if, that we should do the same for the DC trip and cancel our attendance. I have a feeling the partnership's likely going to be doing the same here very shortly, but just in terms of, and I've asked, I've reached out to see where they're at in their decision-making process. Haven't heard back from them yet. I'm guessing they're getting that request quite a, quite a few. I've heard a few already dropping out, but I would advise the council that we request that cancellation, but that's something that we intend to do at a staff level. And then, there's a whole lot of more details that we're working on. I attended the first large EOC briefing at Polk County Emergency Management on Tuesday morning. Had 75, 80 people in the room, mostly from the medical community. It was really focused on that side of things. Learned a lot in terms of things that are being discussed. I think a lot of positive things are being discussed in terms of things that they're working on now, in terms of as it eventually gets to Polk County and spreads in Polk County. So, we'll continue to stay engaged in those conversations and really building our own here local plan. I know this, West Des Moines School District has reached out to myself, City Manager Tom Hannon, West Des Moines, and Mark Aronson in Windsor Heights for a meeting on Monday afternoon to talk about what they're planning on doing and just in terms of making sure that their, the cities are informed on that. I haven't heard anything from Waukees yet at this point. We did know that Des Moines schools had made a decision earlier today to suspend classes basically to the end of the month, almost to the end of the month following spring break. So, we'll be putting together some more documented plans and efforts that we'll be sharing with you all in terms of what staff proposes, in terms of steps that we will take, in terms of services. Also, we're going to be encouraging through our communication mediums to, for our residents as they interact with us from a kind of an e-commerce standpoint or to encourage the e-commerce. You know, if you have to pay a water bill, let's do it over the phone, maybe not, you know, try to limit the in-person touch as much as we can at this stage, but that as things progress, we may put more restrictions in terms of having some six-foot separations and doing some different things with the library and some of our other public spaces. So, there's a lot of things that we have on our list. Also, things related to workforce, knowing that we've got critical services that we provide, and then how are we going to do that if we're down significant a number of staff in certain areas? We're already implementing a lot of protocols, particularly at the public safety level in terms of if they're responding, appropriate protective equipment, things that we're doing and we've been doing and Westcom from a dispatch standpoint has already been doing. They've locked down the dispatch center to no visitors in terms of restricting access to things, just proactive things that we can do now and making sure we have sufficient supplies in our facilities for, for cleaning surfaces. So, a lot of things to that, a lot of things that we still have to vet out, but we'll be putting that together and sharing that with you all and then making you aware as service changes will, you know, potentially could happen, you'll be the first to know before we put it out to the public, just in case as you get constituent questions, to Pete's point earlier on communication. So, a lot to ha, happen there, and we'll be sharing that here hopefully shortly. It's going to be a big part of the, of the days to come here for us in terms of how we're planning at a staff level. But the main one at this point in time that I wanted to bring up was the, the travel restrictions that we wanted to put in place and how the DC trip related to that, so.
Waukees will decide about classes tomorrow afternoon by the end of the day.
Good to know.
Which the impact, I think, for your community, thank goodness you're here, right from a Clive community service perspective, you're going to have folks in your community without food perhaps because they rely on the schools, those kids going to school. I mean, that's, I think, the most significant impact for those students who are in the most need.
Lot of ramifications that we, we try to think of everything, right? Matt, thank you, and appreciate both of your comments there. Questions for Matt?
Just a couple of quick questions. Something that came across on that email today saying that the virus could survive on paper for several days. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
I have not seen that on one of our trusted sites yet, but there are partner organizations. I think the study that I saw was a preliminary, preliminary result that the researchers at Princeton had determined about the ability of the virus to travel airborne and stay alive airborne for a duration. for a duration, I don't remember the exact amount of time, but multiple days for surfaces. And so whatever the science ends up telling us about this, I think the piece I've heard from the Iowa Department of Public Health, which has been most important, is that hand washing, wherever you might encounter it, whether that's because you touched something or it got on your hands just airborne, is enormously effective at controlling this virus. Another sort of interesting thing that came up yesterday is we've been thinking about the pool and what this could potentially mean in the future. We found that just the normal chlorine and other chemicals we put in the pool are effective at killing this nasty stuff as well. We're not anywhere near that part of the story yet. There's got a lot of time to go, but staying focused on just those core, simple things are what we're hearing most frequently from our partners at the Department of Health, and just over and over again how effective that can be to control this.
Well, I guess it might be worth, I mean, I'm a little concerned about all the paper that comes in and out and our employees handling them, so just something to look into to see if it is, if it does stay live airborne for multiple days, seems like if it hits paper, that might be the case as well. Secondarily, will we be looking also at the economic impact, hotel motel and so forth, be able to report to us so as we look at the budget, we'll have a sense for that impact as well?
Yeah, because I think they'll definitely will be on the hotel motel side, and I'm sure the CBB has already probably started thinking about that as well.
If you have jury duty, the good news is, from a legal perspective, the state chief justice, you could get out of jury duty if you had been exposed, so I'll throw that as a good news. But there is an order out there talking about even public access to the courthouses, so.
Well, to John's point, I think that is worthy of discussing sooner than later to the CBBS and the BRVOs of the world of releasing those dollars temporarily, right, back to the cities. Because I can tell you, last night I canceled five, not here, obviously, but five hotel rooms for four days each, you know, and it was a conference in May, exact date of the DC conference that my staff was going to. It's been canceled already in May. And another one local for the solid waste in Storm Lake was canceled with, you know, 200 people. So that discussion, the CBB farther than just, the money is going in there, but it's directly affecting the cities, right? Their budget too, but the real impact is the cities.
There is, and it's opposite proportional how many people are in, are in those hotel rooms too. My sense is we might have to dip from a CBB perspective, dip into those reserve funds to deal with, to deal with the drop in income right there. I don't know.
It's a lot, it's a lot happening fast.
But a timeout on those payments, you know, so.
Yeah, Matt, you had.
And it's interesting too, is you might have, it was kind of funny, well, funny isn't the word I guess I should use, but you might have a drop in the hotel motel revenue, but then sales tax revenue might spike because of the purchasing that's happening right now. Also, what I wanted to mention related to the remoting question, is that's something that we're also looking at. We, we don't have a large number of staff, just in terms of how we operate as an organization where we can do that. A lot of our services, you know, majority of our employees, public safety, public works, parks where they're, you know, doing that work, library, but if we're starting to restrict things like library programs, things like that, that gives us more options for some of those staff to be able to work on projects remotely, and then obviously, staff in this building, there are certain opportunities there, but we're vetting. We have a number that have that capability today and do it, particularly at the director level as needed, but we're also trying to make sure that we have a number of laptops and hardware in place, but what hardware gaps do we have if we have to ramp that up even more? That's another thing that we're looking at right now, and also looking at firming up our online meeting subscriptions, because one reality that we're kind of playing out is, do we start holding Plan and Zoning Commission, Park Board, you know? That's something the council wanted to consider, online-based meetings for some of these gatherings as it spreads. So those are some things that we're also thinking about and preparing for. And at a staff level, we're kind of suspending the in-person neighborhood meetings. Clark Street one's probably the last one we'll be doing for a while in terms of actually physically bringing people together, but then providing other methods, mainly electronically, of how we can seek that input on things. Thankfully, we don't have a large amount of those planned with District One, that's, those things would come more in the summer. So we're also looking at those kinds of interactions as well and trying to limit them as much as possible.
What vehicle are you thinking about, a Zoom or?
We have a go-to meeting subscription, but we're also looking at flexibility, should we have two? Zoom is another one that's used quite a bit, and so the key there is we have like the one subscription to go to meetings, so you couldn't have multiple at the same time. So should we have another option? So for having multiple meetings at the same time, both from a staff perspective and then boards and commissions, can we hold more meetings that way? That's things that we're looking at.
Well, just speaking to the issue of not having all your eggs in one basket, as you know, colleges, universities, schools across the country are all moving online.
Bandwidth, yeah.
Or maybe a bandwidth issue with, you know, if you put all your eggs in the Zoom basket and they're overwhelmed.
Yeah. So we're gonna be vetting those different options, and that's even an issue we have on the remoting side. Any company has on the remoting side is the bandwidth that you have through your VPN back to your, we have enough licenses in terms of the amount of staff that could remote in, but some of that maybe we might have a speed delay because of the piping, you know, the hole there to get through, so a lot of things that we're talking about right now.
Mayor?
Yes?
Councilman Edwards brought up paper with the possibility that the virus could live on that for a certain amount of time. Where should a hospital put a directive out? Also, something we might all take for granted, but money and the handling of money is also a real concern with the transfer of this particular virus right there, so, and whether that deals with the city perspective or an individual basis, again, washing hands, hand sanitizers, et cetera, just being very cognizant of handling money and then not touching your face or your eyes, some of that nature, so FYI.
It's everything, it's credit cards, debit cards.
Do you have a line on hand sanitizer? I know it's a pretty short.
It's all sold out. It's virtually, I had McKesson today, but in fact, ask me, which is one of the largest distributive medical products, trying to get some. I, of course, had some and sold it to them. The last of it.
At a fair price, I'm sure.
At a market competitive price.
Lots, lots to digest here and work on, so I have a lot of confidence in our staff to do that. Matt, thanks for your leadership on it. Any other questions for Matt?
Mayor, could I in on a positive note potentially?
Yes.
Please, please.
A family got moved into our new home in Clive this past weekend. Happy, but I wanted to thank this group very, very much for the flexibility that you extended to my family so we could get the right housing situation for us. So now all I gotta do is get the landscaping done and get the outside of the house painted, and it'll look like a proper Clive house.
Looking forward to the picnic.
There goes my neighborhood.
If he'd waited one more week.
It went long ago, Weaver. It went long ago.
Good. Pete, glad that that's done for you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ted, you have anything else for the good of the order?
No, I'm good. Just hope that the airlines stay working so that we can get back next week.
Safe travels to you and your family. Thank you, Ted, for being on with us tonight. Matthew, any other correspondence?
Just further.
Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing further, we're gonna adjourn at 7:58.